All right, I'm calling the February fifteenth meeting of the Chapua Library Board to order. Thank you for joining us tonight. Do we have, I guess we just joined with the public, Andrew, is there anyone in the chat? Or you see any hands raised for public comment?
The pledge.
Yep, and no, there's nobody yet, just children's room.
Okay, all right, well then let's all stand for the pledge.
Okay, let me just share my screen with the flag. There we go.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have any public comment?
Okay, just as a housekeeping, if anyone in the attendance would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand. Option now. Okay, there are no raised hands.
Okay, um, did anybody have any questions or amendments to the minutes for the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Chapua Board of Trustees? Okay, then those are accepted. As posted. At this point, I'd also like to thank the Strategic Planning Committee. We did have an interim, a meeting on March first where we did adopt the strategic plan and we are now formally discharging the Strategic Planning Committee. Thank you. And that will roll us right into my president's report, which for tonight, I'll just keep it very short. There is a WLS trustees meeting on February twenty-fourth, I'll be attending that. I'm encouraging all the trustees to join me. It's virtual and 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 I think, you know, Ronnie's on that committee. And I'm sure you'll be there with me.
Yes, I will, and it's the twenty-third at seven.
Twenty-third, twenty-third, seventeen AM, perfect.
On advocacy.
Yep, so that's a, that's a very good one for all of us and I'm glad that that WLS and your committee has has pushed forward for us to have that opportunity, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll go right to Andrew, your, I'll, you can give your report.
Certainly, thank you, Liz. With the recent storms, I've been monitoring the parking lot and sidewalks to make sure that they are properly cleaned and that the our contractor is coming and taking care of them in a timely manner. The radiator screen has been installed under the window bench in the children's room. And our art gallery has been patched and repainted. As Liz mentioned, the long-term strategic plan has been adopted by the Chapua Public Library Board of Trustees. And I'm currently in the process of developing a plan to achieve the goal set forth in said strategic plan. We have been in the process of conducting interviews for the vacant part-time librarian one position. We have actually just found candidate and they have passed the background check requirement. So we should be reporting that shortly, which we're excited for. The staff assistant library civil service list has been broken. We have advertised the position in multiple services. We have received a large number of highly qualified applicants or in the process of scheduling phone interviews. My first interviews will be tomorrow. We're going to narrow down the list and then bring them selected people in for in-person interviews, we're very excited about that. Two and two has provided an update to the Communications Committee and has provided draft versions of the logo to consider. We've met with them again to continue moving through refinements. We are in the process of booking artist display in the art gallery. I've been working with the Budget Committee to put together a draft twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget to be approved by the Chapua CSD Public Library Board of Trustees. The library has resumed seating or returned seating, opened the study rooms and is currently in the process of resuming limited in-person programming. And we have been working with the Friends of the Chapua Library to plan and run the annual book sale on the last week of April. The Chapua School District has generously agreed to loan the library tables for use during said book sales, we're very appreciative of that. And that is my report.
Thank you, Andrew, I'm especially excited to have the gallery repainted and up and running, that's a special space for us and I think it's a, it'll be really nice to have some more programs. It'll really answer some of the strategic, the feedback we got from the community too about wanting to be able to come in and have more experiences that are omnipresent in the space, so that's, that's great. Does anyone have any questions for Andrew? Okay, and I neglected to mention as part of Ronnie.
I was just was wondering he, on his meetings, an equity meeting?
Yes, I've mentioned that before, the library has a working group of staff, we've taken a workshop on equity. Oh, okay. Posturing an anti-racist environment in the library and we've continued to meet to discuss how we can continue to further those goals, which is wonderful because it ties in very closely with our strategic plan, so. Initiative that was started amongst the staff and really spearheaded by the children's room in the beginning and they've done, the group has done an excellent job of continuing to move forward.
Great, thank you, Andrew, thank you, Liz.
That's really great. For a matter of record-keeping, Lane, I neglected to mention that our board member, Shorain, had a family emergency and that should be reflected in the minutes. That, that is the reason she didn't be able to join us. Yes, okay, then I think we'll move right along to finance, we have the treasurer's report, thank you, Joe. Did you want to mention anything about your report tonight?
No, I think, I think the financials speak for themselves. If anyone, you know, has any questions about anything, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Does anyone have any questions for Joe? Okay, then can I get a motion? Actually, I'm the, well, now we move on to the, to the January statement.
I'll make a motion to approve the January statement.
I'll second.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Moving on to the capital fund, are there any questions about the capital fund?
Just, oh. Were we going to move the roof balance back into the general fund?
We should.
Yeah, we did that, okay, I will reflect that on the next, the next statement.
Right, we, we made those motions, correct? That's.
I thought we had, that's why I was surprised it wasn't.
Yeah, yeah.
We did it, okay. We've done it.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's, right, the statement needs updated.
Right, and then, did, and then did we want to make another motion to to allocate anything this evening?
For the, for the outside projects, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, for, for any of the.
I'm sorry, Liz.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I should have better numbers for that from Bill, I'm going to be speaking to him tomorrow about the RFP. So we don't, I don't know that we, you know, to move in.
We have a little more data.
Right, so we'll plan to do that hopefully at our next, at the, at the March meeting. The March eighteenth, I believe. Um, okay. Fifteenth, sorry, okay, um, our, yeah, okay, um. So that's fine, um, did everyone, I know, Nishat, thank you for going in and reviewing the bills, appreciate it. Does anyone have any question on the bills? Ronnie?
Yeah, I, well, I'm just, I just want clarification on the two, there were two bills for the New York Power Authority, so what's, I'm assuming they're two different, like it seems we didn't pay them one month or something and then and then the police, we paid, is that for the security?
Yeah, that's, that's our yearly permit.
Yeah, okay.
The power authority, I, I'd have to look back, Joe, maybe you remember, I don't have that bill in front of me, but I believe they sent the, the bill after, late, so it didn't make the last meeting.
Okay.
We get that from the school.
Right.
Right, yeah, that comes out from the, from the district. So if they, if they're, they delay getting to us, you know, we can't, it's nothing we can do to pay it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
We made a motion.
To approve the February bills.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ronnie's in a second, I have one other question, because the police bill was much larger than was budgeted. Did I, did I see that right?
No.
It's fifty dollars?
It was fifty dollars, which is the normal annual bill.
What do you, okay. And I must have seen. Sorry, go ahead. Hold on one second. Okay, sorry about that, all right, um, so, okay, so we, we've made motions for the bills. Lane made the motion, Ronnie seconded, all in favor of approving the January twenty, no, sorry, the February twenty-twenty-two bills. Hi.
Before we move on, Liz, we still have to approve the final auditor's report.
Yes, yep, that's, that's, that's on here. Oh, you know what, that was supposed to be the first thing we did, so at this point, we, we had reviewed last time and we received the official copy of their final audit and we've all reviewed it. Due to, I, so I would like to ask for a motion to approve the the Chapua Central School District Public Library Report to those charged with governance, June thirty, twenty-twenty-one, delivered on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make a motion too.
Okay, go, Lane.
So Lane made the motion.
I'll second.
Do I have a second? Ronnie's in a second, thank you, all in favor? Hi. Hi. Okay, thank you to the auditors.
Liz, I can answer the question about the police if you want, that I just brought up files.
Okay.
It, it was only, it was a fifty-dollar charge, but the amount on the side is the total for the building maintenance category. So that's the police, the security and Grainger together.
That's like the four hundred.
Yep, yeah, the four, three forty-seven and the fifty.
Perfect, thank you for clarifying, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Did, and, and we are awaiting Bill, so, uh, do you want to just tell us, I think you gave us your personnel, you gave us a lot of the personnel update as part of the director's report, is there anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, not for personnel. No motions or resolutions at this time.
Sure, um, Ronnie, while we're waiting for Bill to join, would you be comfortable giving us the Centennial Committee update?
Sure, so the Centennial Committee met, let's see, about a week and a half ago and we went, we had invited members of the Friends of the Library to come because we felt that the board and felt that there's a good opportunity for fundraising with the Centennial and with our Centennial, their fiftieth anniversary. So we discussed different possibilities with them and the committee has, well, the, the staff, Andrew and Tao and the staff have worked on a variety of programs that they're planning and a lot, many are in cooperation with other community groups, which is great. The other thing that we, they're also putting together a budget, which hopefully will be able to vote on in March. And the other thing that's very exciting, because it's something that also is a goal of the Communications Committee is to launch a newsletter, a real newsletter, not a print newsletter, not just the calendar with the programs on it, so that's something that, and then with the the new logos and everything, it'll be really pretty terrific, so that's just a little brief Centennial Committee report and.
Thank you for stepping in and doing that on Shoray's behalf on short notice, I appreciate it.
Now, would you like the Communications Committee, since that's also on the chair of that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the good news is the committee met, the, Shoray and I are the board members on that, Andrew and Tao are the administration and for the reviewing of the presentations from two plus two plus two, we included two staff members, Amy Berger, a reference librarian, and Robyn Friedman, the head of Children's Services to help in reviewing everything and we're excited to let everybody know that on March first at our work session that we're having, that Alex and Alex will make a presentation of the branding and the logo and they've come up with something that we can use with Centennial and it's generated a lot of ideas of different ways to promote the library too, so I don't want to say too much about what we went over with them, because I'd really like them to do their thing and show the board and and the community at the same time, because it'll be a public meeting and people will be able to see what, what's happening, which as I've said countless times, since I got on this board, I've wanted, I felt that this was really important to do, so it's very exciting that in my fifth year here, we're, we're doing it, so. Anyway, and thanks to Andrew and Tao for all their work on that too, I know I speak for Shoray as well in, in thanking them. And that's that.
Thank you, Ronnie.
That's great, it's a really exciting effort and I think we've all been talking about making sure that as that, as we, once we adopt the new logo, that we really apply it and build some, some consistency, because the more we use the same branding, the more we can be top of mind and then considered for patrons to get more use out of their library card and their relationship with the library, so it's, it's a, it's a very, it's very important that we have strong branding, that we help people so that when they think to get a book, they come and get it for free as opposed to getting it from Amazon and having to pay for it and participating in the shared resource and in the learning opportunities and the social opportunities. You know, I was at the library today and I saw we had all our tax files out, which is great. And I know we have some exciting programs where we're helping the county out coming up COVID-related, so I'm really excited for the library and I really appreciate the work we're doing to try to give it some branding, refresh, new logo to help all the good work that Andrew and your team are doing every day for our community, really, that we maximize that, so. Thank you, everyone, and Bill, you have perfect timing, if, if you're ready, we're ready.
Oh, wow. Okay, so, oh boy.
So building grounds.
Yeah, I know, I just came from a Mount Pleasant meeting, so I've just got to get the wheels spinning.
Yeah, we just went through, we just went through the whole agenda and we are very excited to hear from you about the you know, the, the exciting stuff that's going on at the library and how we're working through getting some of those cost estimates done.
Okay, yes, and we've, we are working with, I believe it's next Wednesday or Thursday, I'm meeting with a mechanical contractor to give us some order of magnitude estimates on replacing the, the fan coil units, the HVAC units. And, and just the general update of the library, we met another firm for the outside master plan on Friday. I am in the process of writing a spec, so we can put that out on the street. I should have that done in probably about a week and then I, I think we should schedule a working meeting with the committee to go over it, make sure we've got everything we want in it and then we can put it out on the, on the street. Okay, I don't have my report right in front of me, can you? What else was on my report, Andrew?
You had mention of the heating pump for the HVAC in the children's room. It should arrive on two, two-seven, you said.
It was done yesterday.
Excellent.
That was the back ordered pump?
Yes, yep.
Excellent.
Yeah, they didn't even call me, I, I got the ticket from the tech last night, said he installed it yesterday, so. We're good there, we're still waiting. No, I'm sorry, that wasn't the pump, that was the AC motor for the children's program room that they did yesterday, not the pump.
Okay.
Okay. And then.
Do we know the timing on the pump?
They're supposed to get back to me this week, they're supposed to be in touch with the manufacturer.
Okay, all right, well, that was too good to be true anyways, but at least we're checking off what we can, right?
Yeah, well, we got the motor in.
Excellent, and then the only other thing was the stage curtain.
Okay, well, that you're gonna vote on tonight, I assume, or?
I would like us to, to make that, I, do you want me to read out your recommendation?
If you'd like, yeah.
So we received two quotes for the stage curtain replacement in the theater. The first company was AT Equipment Sales based in Scarsdale, New York, for a cost of four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. The second was from Young Equipment Sales in Hopg, New York, at sixty-three hundred dollars even. Bill has worked with Young Equipment Sales on different projects, their work was always satisfactory. He's never used AT Equipment Sales, but after meeting their principal, looking at their experience, they're confident that they will do an excellent job for their libraries, so he is recommending AT Equipment Sales. I can also say, I spoke to Joe Grumondo over at the school district who has worked extensively with AT Equipment Sales and recommends them extremely highly. So they are both the lowest cost, very, very reasonable and are coming highly recommended by our partners at the school.
And these curtains meet the fire department codes?
Yes, and, yep, and not only do they meet it, but they're fireproof by nature, so I don't have to send them out to be treated on a five-year basis, so, once we put these up, other than cleaning, we should be in a much better position.
And, but the price that you quoted is just to get the curtain, we still?
No, that's installation.
Installation too.
That's the whole job will be, yep.
Okay.
So does someone want to make a motion for us to authorize Andrew to purchase the curtain for the four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars from AT Equipment Sales?
Are you making that motion, Liz?
Ronnie's making the motion.
Yes. To authorize Andrew to purchase the curtain from AT Equipment Sales for forty, what is it, forty-three?
Forty-nine seventy-five.
Forty-nine. Looking at the bill.
Four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five.
Four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Nishat, seconds? All in favor? I.
Okay.
Passed unanimously?
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your work on that, I'm, it's, it's a, it seems like a simple thing, but nothing is simple and we really appreciate that we will have a new curtain and it will be the same red color and, and it will be, you know, good to be able to use the theater soon, I know Tao, you're working on that as well. And we're looking forward to bringing it back online.
Okay, great, I think Andrew's got some colors too, he can go with red or you can change the colors if you'd like, he gave you a book, didn't he, Andrew, or a chart?
Yeah, I've got a color guide in my office.
I think we did talk about red.
Yeah, Ronnie? Yeah, I would like to know how you're going to go about making that decision.
We had talked about staying at the same color when, when we spoke in email, so that's what I was, okay, the impression we were doing.
Okay, good.
Chairs are red, aren't they?
Yes. Yep.
Yep, all right, no, that's great, thank you for your legwork on that one, Bill. I'm trying to think if we had any other questions for Bill, does anyone have any questions for Bill?
No.
Okay, I think then, thank you for your report and your efforts on behalf of the library and we appreciate you coming tonight, I know you had a busy schedule.
Yep, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we, for the first time, put the budget documents online for the community and I know we wanted to discuss them here. I appreciate that Nishat and Shoray have been helping you, Andrew, and committee to put everything together for us and I'd just like to open it up for questions from the board.
Before we start with questions, I do have an update.
Okay.
But the Medicare credit reimbursement line, I am working with our lawyer about an issue that has come up and so that number will probably be required to be increased, I'm just waiting to hear back from them, so. For that, that line, which is currently forty-one thousand forty, will most likely increase.
What's the magnitude of that increase? First, nine and nine.
I'm not sure yet. Probably around ten thousand dollars, I'm guessing, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that'll be to cover multiple years of a single situation, I believe, right?
So potentially multiple years of a situation, along with ongoing and then moving forward.
Right.
The, you know, having that budgeted properly.
Yeah, so it seems like a, a big increase, but it may be not, not as.
Some of it is one time.
Yeah, some of that's a one-time and then the ongoing, so we don't have this, you know, pop up again. This was discovered, it was apparently an issue that popped up in twenty-twenty and then was allowed to go fallow before I came here and it's now being addressed again. And so.
Andrew, did you have something else?
Just, the only difference between the fine-free and with fines is the budgeting the venue, the revenue of the fines and the amount of twelve thousand dollars, other than that, the two budgets are the same, so just when we're looking at them, it's the only difference.
Okay, and I think we'll wait till next month to talk about that when we have the full board, hopefully we're all here next month. But I'll, I'll now take questions from the board. Ronnie?
Okay, so I have a couple of things that I want to ask you about, Andrew, and some things that I, I brought up previously. The, I, I feel like the page. The, I feel like the page that has to do with all the salaries, that something has to be changed so that the Sunday people are listed and not as blank zeros in the, in that part. So I think it's a formatting thing. And then it would be more clear as to like what the salaries are for, for those people that work on Sunday. Because they're listed as part of the, with the, with the.
Maybe after their name just put in parentheses, Sunday only?
Well, but, but you're having them working zero hours, which doesn't make.
It's from, from an Excel standpoint, Ronnie, it's how the worksheet works. You can't put an hour in there and then have them at, on Sunday, but you need to list all your employees at their rate.
Right. You could list them under the Sunday section. I just think that this is confusing. That's my opinion. I'm just sharing that. Okay, proceeding with books, it looks like you're not increasing. First, we're going to ask for less money for books. Now it looks like the amount's staying the same as last year. Yes or no?
Yes, the board had come back to me and asked me to restore funding to that, so we did so.
Right. So what I think though is, if I recall, when Kathy Paulson spoke to the board about the teen services, she mentioned that we have the, probably the highest circulation of young adult books.
We're very high, yes. And I did increase, I increased her book budget specifically.
Okay, well, I think it could be increased even more. So I think I'd like to see a little bit more in the, so that the book budget is a little bit higher than it was. That's my opinion. Then.
Ronnie, can I just add on top of that?
Well, if you want.
It's the same topic, same line item. So for that matter, you know, if anything, I would redirect some of the recording money. Because I think CDs and DVDs and all that will continue to be outdated and obsolete. So if, from a line item standpoint, redirecting some of your recording to books would make a lot of sense.
Okay, so, but more money should go into, so we're on the same page. It's just a matter of like where the money's coming from. Okay, fine. The other thing is, I do not believe under postage and printing, these look like old numbers from previous years. The Communications Committee and the Centennial Committee, we were talking about having a real newsletter, not just the calendar. So that's gonna cost more money to print. And I don't see that. Let me just finish.
That's what I'm doing.
Can I just finish, Andrew, please? So I, from this amount, it looks like it's almost the same as last year. And I want to be sure that you have enough money in there, because postage will be more. And the producing, the, it's just this calendar booklets. Yeah, I just feel like there may not be enough money in the budget for that. So that's, that's, that's that. And the other thing I noticed is, here we have board meeting minutes zero. That shouldn't even be on the budget. We don't have, we're not, so we don't need to have a zero, because we're not even having board minutes needed. Somebody's not being paid. It's gonna be.
That's a legacy line item. We could, we could, we don't need that on the spreadsheet, I guess.
Right. And I think where it says accountant firm for Gallo, it should really indicate that that's the treasurer. So that we're paying for the treasurer. So that's not there. So those were my, that's, those were basically my issues. So I think you really need to, oh, and what was the other thing? Oh, then the other thing. Yes, let's get to that. Got. Where is it?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything you said, Ronnie.
Okay.
So the postage, we are at, we've actually reached out to find out what the rate will be for the new newsletter. And we'll modify that line if we needed. We were very underspent, as we haven't been doing any postage or printing. But it looks, it looks like it should be somewhere similar. But we will, we are in the process of getting that for the Centennial Committee. And then we also, for the Centennial printing, we were going to have that as part of the Centennial budget, not as a recurring expense.
Okay, so the other thing is the, the amount for staff development and board development. So $13,000 does not seem like a reasonable amount for this year, unless you can tell us all the ways that you're going to spend that money. Like, do you know that you're going to spend, send X number of people to the ALA conference? Do you know that you're doing program X and that it's going to cost such and such? So I think that to ask for such a number without giving backup of like, this is exactly how it's going to be spent, is not reasonable. So what I'm suggesting is that to put in like, let's say, $5,000 and that some of that money would be used to send, we have, we happen to have a staff member who's, belongs to the ALA, who's been on committees for years. And that's somebody who should be reimbursed for going to the conferences, because she has to go to the conferences and should get some, the hotels and travel are outrageous for these things, but at least a little stipend for that. So some money should be used for that. Some money could be used for some, you know, if you know there's some training that staff could have. Because I think before you ask for something, you have to say what it's going to be used for. And we haven't seen that. So I know possibly we need to have some kind of policy of like who, how people will be, it will be decided that they go and to different conferences. So I would say, and I apologize to my dog, it's just been that kind of day. Sit down, sweet dog. So I think that we could start with saying five thousand, sit, sit for this coming, for this coming year. So I'm just gonna try to deal with her and yield the floor to somebody else.
Thank you, Ronnie. So I think, yeah, I think there is time between now and when the budget would actually be voted on to develop that policy. I think the thinking, we need a little bit more thinking before we meet again in terms of how, how you envision using it. And then the, we can convene the policy committee and get a policy in place to make sure that that's, that it's clear who's eligible for that, those funds, how they're gonna be allocated, whether it's T and E or whether it's, you know, outside consultants or what, what is the mix and how we envision using that?
Yep. Yep. As I said, this is a very draft budget. And, you know, I have been gathering examples of that policy. You know, staff development policies from other libraries. Nishat and I spoke about exactly that. You know, having a personnel committee meeting to put that together. And I'm in the process of breaking down. So instead of just one big staff development pool, breaking that down so that it's clear.
Right. And can I just say one more thing? I'm also sorry about Maggie tonight, that as all of you know, I'm very supportive of staff and know the value of staff development. So I, you know, would be happy to support more funds for that. But we have to know, it's not gonna be that, you know, well, there's $10,000. So everybody can go and, you know, have fun. And, and because at these conferences especially, there's a lot of learning that goes on and you bring back things. And, you know, there's also the NILA conference. People may want to go to that. So I'm very supportive, but we have to know exactly that it's how it's gonna be spent. And just to say 13,000. And also, I just want to make another comment about, I'm sorry. It's just been that kind of day. I'm really sorry. You know, it says in this, in the, that 1% of the budget should be spent on staff development, but that's pre-COVID and things have changed a lot with how programs are done. So anyway.
Right. And WLS is doing a great job of picking up some, some more new, new opportunities for training and staff development. I think we talked about that last time. So, you know, whatever the final number is, I'm sure you'll, you'll get back to us with more information when we meet next month. And I'm looking forward to that. As I think, to Ronnie's point, we definitely want to support the staff and give you whatever funding you need for that. We just want to respect the taxpayers' wallet and make sure that we're being smart and thoughtful.
Absolutely.
So I just have a question. I know, you know, we're looking at this number and it's, oh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. So we're looking, it's still in draft phase and we're looking at this number. And say we come up with, like Ronnie said, like $5,000 and we all agree on that. But later on in the year, if something comes up, would be, be willing to, if there was some staff development that would be beneficial for the whole staff, would be willing to say, okay, we will ward on it and let the staff have that. Because my concern is, if we limit the staff development budget too little, and then we don't, if something comes up and we, we're not able to offer it, we've lost one here, one whole year when we can budget that again. And so that's my concern about it. So would we be willing if we, if that number is not as high as that, as 13,000, would be we willing as a group, if something came up that was important for all the staff, would be we willing to ward on it and provide that for them?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think I'll just, Ronnie, I'll let you speak in a minute. But I think generally speaking, the library has been very responsible with the funds and has done a great job of making sure that we do have a capital fund. And if we, and, and that we have some operating funds as well. So if we felt like we needed to allocate towards something that didn't make it into the budget, we're not completely, we have some discretion to do that, which is important and what makes the library, you know, so nimble in a way that we're not, you know, thankfully, we're not in the position of being right on the line where we don't have any flexibility. Obviously, we want to, to the best of our ability, predict and agree and be totally transparent and not have it sit on our five shoulders. You know, that's not how we want to operate. So we're blessed with good financial security and a good, and a good setup. But to the extent that Andrew can put things in the budget and the community can decide, that's the way we want to operate. Ronnie, you wanted to add something? You're on mute.
I'm trying to unmute. Yes, so basically what you said, that yes, of course, the board would look at supporting staff development. And, but maybe between, you know, I don't know what you can find out now. But are there things, Andrew, that you know are, will be happening in the next year that you think the staff might want to be involved in? And then, you know, that's the thing, like, I'm sure there are things that, that are planned in the future. So if you can, if you have a sense of that, that's something, that's something else. Or like particular training, maybe, you know, there are people on the staff that will, because we're gonna do much more with marketing. And I don't know that you have a marketing expert on the staff. And maybe there's some way they could be trained, because that would be important. And I think the board would support that, for them to have that kind of training. So if you knew that, and so that's what I'm talking about, that, and, you know, when you want something, you have to come with the details, come with the, come with the receipts. So anyway, that's, thank you, Liz, for letting me add that.
Sure. Thank you, Ronnie. Nishat, did you have, sorry. Lane, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this conversation?
No, I think I'm good. I think anything I was thinking has been touched on.
Okay. And, and we had talked a little bit about technology and what we might need there. And it seems like we're pretty well taken care of. So again, that would be something that we don't anticipate needing a separate line item for, which is great. I think, you know, I really appreciate your efforts to, to make everything better in terms of our ability to report out to the public, to enhance everything we're doing. I think we're gonna be putting out a press release about the strategic plan. And in there, everyone will see our, our friends are really supportive of that effort and that that was an improvement over the last time. I think this budget is an improvement over our last budget. We're really moving in the right direction and I really appreciate everyone's efforts and hard work. And I, you know, I couldn't have planned, you know, we really, we've done so much under such interesting and unique circumstances. And, you know, as I sat here last night and looked for the governor's proclamation to extend our open meetings online, seeing where we would be tonight. You know, I was glad she approved that. And I really want to thank this board for, really, I know it's not always easy to be in your homes or to not even know where the meeting's gonna be based on the timing of the governor's proclamations in our meetings. So I appreciate everyone's flexibility. And, and, and Lane, thank you for stepping in to take the meetings tonight, last minute, for our board member, Shoray, who, who had a family emergency. Everybody's working really hard and I just, I wanted to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart on this February fourteenth week. All right, can I have a motion to, if there's nothing else, do we have anyone in the public, Andrew, that we?
It's the same two people that were in earlier.
Excellent. And there's no hands raised. So if there's nothing else, I would like to ask for a motion to close the meeting. Ronnie?
I move that we adjourn the meeting at eight seventeen PM.
I'll second.
Nishat, okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.